I'm going to call to order the Thursday, February 15th, 2024 Norton Select Board Meeting. Present are Denise Suziano, Alec Rich, Steve Hornsby, myself, and the Town Manager Mike Units. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, in my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you, everybody. We're going to start with some appointments. And the first appointment we have is an appointment of Michael Keeney as a full-time water and sewer system technician in the water department. And I think Michael is here.
Yes, I am.
Do you want to come up?
Sure.
So we can fire questions at you?
Absolutely. Good evening.
Hey, you know, just want to maybe just introduce yourself, give us some background, and why you're interested in the position?
Yeah, so as I stated to a few of you guys earlier, I've been a resident here in Norton since 2017. My wife and I moved there. I've got three children. Currently enlisted in the National Guard, Army National Guard, going on my end of my second contract, which will bring me to my nine years sometime next year. I plan on doing the full 20 years. As far as the job, my father just retired from the town of Hanglen. And I saw over the years what he got out of the job, what he saw with the friendships, the relationships that he made over the years, and the retirement as well. And I just saw how well that worked out for him. And I figured I'd take a shot, and it's been working out well.
Okay. Mike, did you have anything to add?
Nope, just we're excited to have him on board. He has some good qualifications that'll help us. And I know the Water and Sewer Department's excited.
Okay. Any questions?
What licenses do you currently have for water?
So right now, I hold a Class B CDL. My two-way, I've got over five years' experience with both, with operating and driving both. My last job, I worked for installing gas lines, truck driver, machine operator. So I understand a lot of the testing that I was told about when it comes to receiving water qualifications. We did a lot of the hands-on and the computer testing every year to keep up with qualifications in my old job for EverSource. So I understand a lot of that comes with the job. So I already got a full understanding of how that works. As far as machine operating, very confident in my operating skills. As well for the guard, I'm also the driving instructor for my company in battalion. Sometimes when other people might not be there, I step up for the battalion as well. All types of equipment, from Humvees to five-ton trucks to 10,000-pound forklifts. So I would say one of my strong strengths is definitely when it comes to machine operating and truck driving.
Good. Anyone else?
Are there any other certifications that you want to pursue as part of the water sector?
Yes, I do want to get the 1C. I honestly never needed in the past a forklift license as well. I'm not sure how much I may need it in the future as a town employee, but it was definitely something I wanted to also have more about. I have the 10 years of OSHA. As far as anything else, honestly, I'm open to getting whatever I need to be more qualified for the job.
Great.
So you're going to be more on the construction side of it as opposed to the water side?
As far as I know, I'm not sure exactly the position they have in mind for me. But like I said, I do have experience in that side, and I don't mind learning and trying to obtain as many qualifications on the water side as possible while learning.
Excellent. You've got a good crew to learn from.
Yeah.
So I'll make another question.
No.
I'll make a motion to appoint Michael Keeney as full-time water and sewer system technician in the water department. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, congratulations, Michael.
I appreciate it very much. I hope you don't worry. Thank you very much. I appreciate you all so much. Thank you.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, question, go ahead. Go all standing up?
You can get your free.
All right. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have a resignation of a special police officer. So do we have the vote to accept the resignation?
I would vote yes.
Yeah, okay.
I will motion to accept the resignation of Patrick Mahoney as special police officer.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next up, we have appointments to the civilian traffic control unit.
So there's requests for three appointments tonight. Patrick Mahoney, Timothy O'Leary, and Keith Silver. And so the civilian traffic control unit members will fill in when there's a detail to be done on the streets and there's no officers available, then the civilians will fill in that spot. So I know that the chief has already met with all three to discuss the training and everything. It's all set to go.
Okay.
So a quick question. What's the difference between a special police officer and civilian traffic control?
So a special police officer, there really isn't. When they did the...
Civil service.
What's that?
I went to civil service. That was...
No, when the state passed the new regulations recently, they did away with special police officers.
Okay. I have a question. Do we do, do we do like background checks and stuff like that on this thing? Okay, okay, just making sure. All right. Anyone?
Should we do them all at once, or individually?
Do them all at once.
So I'll make a motion to appoint Patrick Mahoney, Timothy O'Leary, and Keith Silver as members of the civilian traffic control unit. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next up, we have appointment of Dan Pearson to the Open Space Committee.
Yeah, I know the conservation agent recommends the appointment. And Dan has served on the conservation commission for quite a while. He's willing to serve on the Open Space Committee.
Do you know if we have any other openings on the Open Space Committee?
I'll check with John.
Okay.
Is he staying on conservation as well?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's almost safe to assume there's openings everywhere.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah. Okay, I mean, I know Dan has been, he's been on the conservation commission for some time. So, yeah. Okay. All right. I'll take a motion.
I'll motion to appoint Daniel Pearson to Open Space Committee.
Second. Okay, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And finally, our last appointment of the evening is a reappointment of Ellen Kane to the Norton Cable Access. Any commentary on that, or wish to go forward?
I motion to reappoint Ellen Kane to Norton Cable Access.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, very good. All right, and I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes, including but not limited to the July 25th, 2024 joint meeting. That was with the school committee and... What did I say?
July.
Did I say July?
Which will take...
Don't rush through.
All right, let's try this again. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our Jan... I almost did it again! January 25th, 2024 joint meeting with the FinCom and the school committee, as well as February 1st, 2024.
Stop. That was just a blank.
Yeah, just a blank.
So...
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, and we don't have anything under licenses and permits. We'll do a quick stop for announcements. Do we have any announcements tonight that are not in our packets that anybody wanted to make? I think we're, hopefully we have one announcement, but we'll do that later. Yep.
I'm sure if I see any pop up.
Okay. All right. We'll move on to, we have three minutes to kill.
The killing time portion.
Mm-hmm. At that, we could do the override discussion now. Don't you think that would take three minutes?
Is Lucia going to be here for the...
She's, she's not feeling well, so she's going to be, she's going to be online, right?
Yeah.
Lucia, she's on.
That might have taken a bit of a slow time.
Want to just bring her on real quick? All right, Lucia, are you there?
I'm here.
All right.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, we can hear you.
I just wanted to make you people aware with the post-cancer committee ballot. There was made in the office. 115 people received duplicate ballots. This error was caught. The next day after the ballots were mailed out, I notified Mike right away. I spoke with state elections attorney, and I spoke with town council. Letters were sent out. I was able to pinpoint these 115 people. Letters were sent out to them. There have been a few people that came in with both of their ballots. And I want you to know that these ballots, second ballots, will not go through the system. There is a strong check in place. I wanted these people to come to my desk so I could show them exactly how it works and what will happen. Two people have mailed duplicate ballots, the two ballots, which definitely have been caught. I think the most frustrating of all is I received voicemail from a gentleman who was very upset, understandably so. He did not leave his name or number, so I couldn't reach out to him. But I think more important to me is for you people to understand the process. I know exactly what happened. Ballots went out to the label. There are black codes on them that are scanned into the system, which tells us that the ballots were mailed. And this one day, they were not scanned. The next day, when I saw that these ballots had not been scanned, I scanned them in and sent them to the crew to mail out ballots. And that's how the duplicates got sent out, because they were not originally scanned. I just want to reassure everybody that all this is triple-checked. It would have been caught anyway. Everything to date is totals and matching, counts accounted, everything is spot on. So like I said, I just wanted you all to be aware of what has, what happened. And I think I said that letters were sent out to these 115 people, letting them know that this, this happened.
And Lucia, this was, this was for the primary election?
Yeah, the CANS, the CANS cabinet. This was, yeah, definitely for the primary. It was definitely for the primary. The CANS come in, they took one election, but right now, we're only working on the primary.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, see.
So I just want to make sure for all the conspiracy people out there. Say I got two ballots and I sent two ballots back in. It has the same barcode, so once you scan one of them, you try to scan another one, it's not going to be valid. So two votes are not going to go for the same person?
It's not going to follow the same way.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. It's not going to happen like that.
Yes. Yes. Once one gets scanned, once one gets scanned, if another one comes in, and the system sort of bump it and red flags and say we've already received a ballot, at which point, we go into the ballots that have been received, and we double-check to make sure that ballot has come in. So there are red flags, and then they're all counted against the reports and matched against the reports. So I apologize. I'm a perfectionist. I fail, I guess.
Human error, Captain.
I just hope people can be alarmed. So...
Mistakes happen. We know you're on top of your game, Lucia.
And thank goodness those checks are in place, too. I mean, that's, that's what they're there for, too.
Right.
Because people are going to make mistakes, and then it happens.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And also, just so you all know, the state elections division, they're behind the scenes on our state systems, and they're in constant contact with us. And they turn around, they'll, they'll let us know that if there are any ballots that have not been made or been mailed, excuse me, they're right on top of us. So, you know, I just, I just find it frustrating as a town clerk that you can't expect people to know the system, and it is so involved. And, but I did my utmost to, to let people see how it works. And they chose not to see how it works. And I've done the best I can. And to the gentleman, whoever he was, was very upset, my apologies. I would love to call him. I'd love to speak to him. So, that's it.
All right, does anybody have any other questions for Lucia?
No, I just want to say thank you for your diligence and following up on this, Lucia. Great job, as always. And we know that you are a tight ship there. So mistakes happen, and that's okay. You corrected it.
Yeah, Lucia, you do a fantastic job. And please do not beat yourself up over this. This is, I mean, it's a human error. It happens to everybody. It can happen all the time. And, yeah, please don't beat yourself up. And I know you're going to, or you already have. But please stop.
I got it. And thank you for your support.
Yeah. Well, thanks, Lucia, and feel better, okay?
Yeah.
Feel better?
Thank you very much.
All right.
Okay.
Okay. All right, now, we're going to move ahead to the 7:15 PM public hearing. So I will entertain a motion.
Here we go. Is that the fire alarm? I'm not really sure.
It sounds like a, it sounds like a plane taking off. We will, so I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. This is a roll call vote. So Denise?
Yes, aye.
Alec?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And I, too, am a yes. All right, so this is the public hearing on the petition of Mass Electric Company, DBA National Grid of Verizon New England, to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Mansfield Avenue. Install one JO pole on Mansfield Avenue, National Grid, to install new 45-foot C2 pole, 25-foot plus or minus north of pole 2030-50 for a new senior center complex customer at 120 Mansfield Avenue for the town of Norton. Do we have someone from National Grid with us?
Are you doing Michael there?
Michael, are you there? There you are. Hi, Michael.
Hello.
So, yep, so do you want to give us the skinny on this one?
Sure. Sure. So there's no, there's no power on that side of the road easily. So we, we also have a pole that we can put, we can tap over. So we have to install a new pole and tap three wires over for primary to another new pole on the property. And then it goes underground from there. That's, that's a big, sort of, I would use pole.
So we need a pole on the same side of the road as the senior center?
Yes, it will definitely be what they call Verizon pole, where it's going to go underground from. But to get the three legs power over, we need to tap over from the existing line, which is on the eastern side of, into that, and then bring it over to the other side.
Okay. Mike, do you have any questions or anything? No? You guys have any other questions? Seems pretty straightforward to me.
Yeah, so was the transformer ordered as well? Is that, I mean, I know it's not part of this, but I know that was on back.
Mr. Slattery, you want to come up to the podium?
Cool.
It's a good chance to give us an update on what else is going on.
Let me clarify. I'm not trying to take away from Michael's job. But what they need is a pole on the side of where the Chinese restaurant is, because there's a large space between the two poles that are there. So they're placing a pole on that side of the street. Then they're placing another pole on our side of the street where the senior center is. And this is going to be up close to the subway, because we already have all the conduits and all, everything all is all up to within 20 feet of wherever they placed the pole. So we're ready for them after, oh, I won't get sarcastic. The question, hard to believe. The question I have is, you're, in your permit application, you're only asking for one pole. Is that because that's on the right of way? And the one pole that's going to be on the property of the senior center, you don't have to ask for, Michael?
It is, Keith, it looks like the pole that's on the property of the center would be covered by an easement. It's going to be in the right of way.
He said that the pole on the other side would be covered by an easement.
Oh, okay, fine. And the second, well, the second of many questions. The second question is, it was the building committee's understanding that you were installing Verizon's pole? Are they supposed to make all the applications to the town? Or is Verizon's pole going to be on the easement also?
So it, from the sketch I was provided, they're listed as what are called joint pole poles. So they should be on the same pole. So whatever poles we're installing across the street.
It says National Grid and Verizon.
So... Okay, that's not what we have in plans, but I will accept you as the reigning authority until we find out you're wrong. The, probably the most important question I have, Michael, is do you have a timeline? Like, this gets put on the work order tomorrow, and maybe Wednesday, we see them planting a pole, or two, or three?
I don't have any control over that. What I'll do is, after, after it's approved, if it's approved, I will close out a requirement, allow the job to flow through. I'll notify the prosecutors in charge of seeing the job through, as well as the overhead supervisors in that area. And perhaps the workers that are scheduled usually have scheduling meetings, and they plan out for the, at least the following two weeks of the street full stop. So if that's, that's not the plan next week, that's a call at D.C. State Department, so they can get it to play ready.
Okay, Michael, I know you're only the messenger, but we've been waiting at least seven weeks because of paperwork, snafus, and everything else. And we, the building's almost ready to be occupied. Also, when you're asking that work order, the rumors I heard, and some of the committees heard, that you can't, or National Grid, not you personally, cannot order the transformer until the poles are in. So we will actually have power even when you get the poles in, get the wiring crew there, get it down into the conduit, because the conduit and the trench lead up to where the transformer is, that feeds the water to, feeds the electricity to the building. I'm not an electrician. I don't sleep with an electrician, but I've become an expert on what's going on. So my question is, do you have any clue as how long the transformer might take?
I, I'd rather go farther with my job, and the street, the point where the job order can track the rest of whether it's wiring material or coordination somebody else has. It's like, does the job also need a trench inspection, which I'm sure they, if you already saw the conduit, I'm sure it's concrete, right?
Yes.
Probably inspected that.
Yes, and it's in concrete, now covered with snow, ice, and whatever.
Once the pole gets in, and the streets from that section grow up the pole, let's just do a inspection of that, and then the other, have it man-drilled back to the pad, depending on when that's, what it was five feet. And that shouldn't take too long. I can't speak on when material will be available, unfortunately.
Okay, Michael, you're off the hot seat with me. Not really. But Stephen, who was your predecessor, decided not to be involved, probably because of me. I also have some other stuff as pertains to building committee that whenever you have open questions. Thank you.
Sounds good. All right, thank you. Did you want to add anything, Mike?
Yeah, I was just going to say that Verizon pole, it's on the side of the street layout, so we have all license agreement with Verizon.
All right. All right, great. All right, anybody have any other questions for Michael? All right. Who wants to read that motion?
Well, first, I want you to close the public hearing.
Oh, we have to close the public hearing, yes.
How's it easy? I want you to close the public hearing.
All right. All right, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. It has to be a roll call vote. Denise?
Aye.
Alec?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And I am an aye, so we are, public hearing is closed. So now we can entertain a motion. Go ahead, Denise.
I will motion to approve petition for Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid in Verizon New England to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across following public way, Mass, Mansfield Avenue. Install one JO pole on Mansfield Avenue, National Grid, to install new 45-C2 pole, 25-foot, north of, 25-foot of pole, 2030-50 for new senior center complex customer at 120 Mansfield Avenue, the town of Norton.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further, well done. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Roll call, no.
No, no, it doesn't matter. Yeah. And we have a unanimous yes for that. All right. And thank you again, Mr. Slattery. Appreciate it. And Michael, you're all set. You can go.
Thank you very much, everything.
All right, thanks for coming. All right, next up, we have the discussion and vote to approve the host community agreement and memorandum of agreement between the town of Norton and PM Norton LLC. I think we have Amanda on the line. There she is. Yeah.
Hey, Amanda.
Hello, and I think Attorney Obolinski is on there as well. Nick, are you there?
I am. Give me one second.
All right, great.
Good.
How you doing? Good to see you.
Good. How you guys doing?
Good, good. And I see another Lucky Green Ladies person on there. I'm wondering, is that Alyssa, maybe?
That's Alyssa.
Okay. All right, so hi to Alyssa as well. And I think you, do you guys want to do a quick kind of overview of, of the location and the agreement, and we'll go from there?
Certainly. I think Amanda's prepared to take that one. Yes?
Yeah, sounds good. So, couple things first. I do have a dinner, a work dinner, in 20 minutes. So I have to jump off. My colleagues, Nick and Alyssa, will fill in for me. I'm also in three hours of sleep because of my work business right now. So please bear with me. I might have to defer to my colleagues a little more than usual. And also, thirdly, the Wi-Fi in this hotel is a business. So if there are any technical difficulties, I will also defer to my colleagues. But I would like to just share my screen and walk you through a really brief presentation about what we are focusing today. Just one moment. So the proposed business is PM Norton LLC. It is a product manufacturing business. We are doing business as Lucky Green Ladies. And I'll walk you through a little bit about why we're doing this in just a bit. Because I am a little more rushed than I would like to be, I'm going to skip over my wonderful introduction. But if anybody would like to see it, I'm happy to send it. The short of it is, I spec, I have my, I have my doctorate in developmental psychology. My work for today focuses on the economic mobility of people who have been negatively impacted by the justice system, particularly... particularly the war on drugs. And so this is sort of my area of specialties. It is a passion beyond just being a form of income for myself. So it's something that I care very much about. The proposed note location is the same exact location as the existing Lucky Green Ladies. That is 394 Old Colony Road in the back. I will show you in just a moment what the proposed locations would be. So in sharing the space, I have highlighted on the screen the rooms that we, and the space that we would be using. So there is a packaging room. And in addition to that, there is a storage cage in the vaults where all of the product is stored. But we would have our own separate locked system, security cameras, everything is in compliance, things of that nature. We would be basically operating within the same parameters that Lucky Green Ladies is. You know, we might fluctuate from time to time based on demand, but for the most part, we would be conforming to the Lucky Green Ladies. One of our first priorities would be to hire a manager or person in charge. They will all be dual-registered between Lucky Green Ladies and PM Norton. And so the purpose of that is that we could strategically place employees based on the current demands of that day. Some of the products that we in particular would be working with would be flour free rolls and both regular and infused. And you can see that there are different sizes that we would be working in. And just so that, a little bit more background, one of the reasons why we're doing this work is because with the specific licensing restrictions of the delivery Lucky Green Ladies business, they are not allowed to manufacture their own products. And so they are restricted and limited to, you know, purchase whatever sizes and quantities they can from other manufacturers. But that doesn't always meet the need of the customers of Lucky Green Ladies. So the purpose of my business would be to create those sizes and quantities that our customers are specifically looking for. And cutting out some of the stress and trying to make it work that way. I'm just going to speak really quickly a bit about this in the interest of time. We are going to be compliant with all of the testing. So that involves third-party independent lab testing. I have some of the locations listed on the screen. I have, you know, some of the contaminants that we'd be specifically looking for on the screen, such as mold or heavy metals, things of that nature. We will use the Lucky Green Ladies branding. So the beauty is, it's already designed, cuts out a lot of the busy work early on. And it's specifically designed to not be in any way, you know, attracted to, or minors would not be attracted to this branding. We've gone through some preliminary explorations of that, so we're all set there as well. And I'm bringing up the storage and in the packaging room again, just in the context of the filtration system. So this is just on the screen now to remind you all of what our highlighted space will look like. In both of these rooms, we have the odor mitigation system. We have the vents connected to those systems. So every 10 minutes, the air will be pulled through the odor mitigation system. It will be neutralized with a 10-pound charcoal filter and clean air is pushed back out. We are using 10-pound charcoal filter based on the current guidelines, based on our current use. But if, or for whatever reason, we need to scale up this neutralizing process, this machine does support that. So we have the ability to scale up the charcoal filter as well. There should be minimal waste. You know, there might be stems from the product, it's just part of the natural packaging process. If something does spill or anything like that, we follow proper guidelines. We report it, log it. And also, there will be two agents present to be compliant and also for that extra accountability measure. And just to throw out there, like I said, my specialty is in economic mobility and community engagement. So this really does build safer communities. When you pay individuals living wages and in demand growing fields, it reinvests into the community. We do have a commitment to hiring local individuals, specifically providing employment opportunities to those who may have been impacted by the justice system. And we want to, we really believe this is an opportunity to give back. It also offers opportunity for career advancement. So it's not just putting people in jobs that don't lead to anywhere. Professional development is definitely a priority and job retention is a priority as well. I know we're all feeling the national labor shortage. And so this is definitely something that I specialize in and really do believe we can contribute to the community that way. And lastly, we also have a robust thing for community engagement. So it's not just supporting our employees, it's supporting the community at large. So that is the fastest I've ever given this presentation. So I'm happy to pause and answer any questions you may have or go over anything in more detail. But I do want to thank the select board for their attention. And I'm very excited to be here and provide any further clarification.
All right, thanks, Amanda, we appreciate it. We'll open it up to the board. Do you guys have any questions, concerns? No? I just have a question, what's the anticipated opening date?
I'm going to defer to my council because things are constantly evolving. So where are we at now, please?
Well, I mean, this is the first step, as we all know, the step of getting your approval for the host community agreement. And it's the cannabis control commission is the next step, getting their approvals. However, the majority of the work has already been done and set up for that, so six months? Does that sound right, Alyssa? Less?
Oh. I have a policy timeline, I'm 20, oh, this is old. No.
No, but it's sort of hard to anticipate the backlog and when and where there will be a backlog. But because the buildup is complete, because all the ducks are already in a row for the delivery component of the Lucky Green Ladies, which is in the same establishment, it should be a fairly streamlined process. So I mean, I would anticipate for.
July 5, 2024. I told you summer, that's making up of nowhere, that was our plan.
Right, it's six months.
All right.
I'll also add to, we are planning on, once approvals start flowing, we are planning on starting preliminary searches, just so we have our employees ready to be hired when time is come.
And this, just another quick question. So the manufacturing part of this is solely or exclusively for Lucky Green Ladies, correct? You're not manufacturing or doing anything for anybody outside?
Correct, at this time, if we were to do anything, we would go through the proper steps. But at this point, we are only limiting ourselves for the purpose of Lucky Green Ladies.
All right. Do Mike or Renee have anything to add or any comments regarding the contracts? We've seen these contracts for a while, so.
Well, yeah, when Renee's come walking up, similar to what we had before, you know, we got able to take money in advance for impact fees. So every anniversary of this license, we can bill them for any impacts the town has had financially. And provide them with documentation on all of its costs. And they'll have 10 days to pay. Or if they don't agree with that, there's an appeal process that they can follow. Just in their, in the agreement, it says they'll do their best to hire people from Norton and also to use tradespeople from Norton. And all vehicles will be registered in Norton as part of the business, so we'll receive the excise tax.
Okay. Renee, you want to add anything to that?
No, I just, like, there's a mention in the HCA about the type of feet that they'll have, but it's very general, it's like just for vans or something of similar size. The only thing really that's different about this, other than the excise tax, the vehicle excise tax, because it's as applied to some of the other HCAs, this one has a memo of agreement attached to it, and it focuses specifically on the odor control technologies or odor mitigation. So that, we had a lot of discussions. The language has changed just a little bit in this particular one, but still, based on discussions with town council and best practices, we think that they won't have any problems.
The changes that Renee is referencing are basically that the air filtration system that was, that is being utilized by the room. We pushed back slightly in that we felt that it is important to use the robust air filtration system for any room where the product is being opened, manipulated, or used. But like, for example, a break room where the staff are just having their lunch does not need special air filtration system. So we just made it make sense, so that the agreement reads that there will be this robust system in those places where it is necessary, where it could be anticipated that there might be some odor. But we very much recognize that everybody's sensitive to no odor respect audit and minimizing it. And very much hope to make sure that there's no odor whatsoever that gets out. But to the extent that there ever was or is, that we would work quickly and closely with the town to make sure that that was ameliorated.
Great, okay.
Two super quick questions.
Go ahead.
I'm imagining the fleet is associated with the delivery part of the business, but are there any cars associated with PM Norton? What would they be for, since you're just packaging and putting the next room?
So right now, we have Toyota Creasins for the delivery. I had Renee add in, or there was discussion around potentially using like a Sprinter van. Because if the, we pick up our product right now for the delivery operations, it saves us money with, you know, sometimes people charge delivery fees. But it's a little bit limiting in that if we were to make really big purchases, and sometimes we do, it can't all fit in our box. So with the product manufacturing, I hope that we scale to that point. But yeah, it would only be for really big product purchases, but excuse me, I have to take the phone.
Thanks, Alyssa.
I will just add that too. We are very familiar with the processes that need to be in place, so having GPS monitoring and things of that nature. So we are prepared to do that if and when that comes.
Another quick question was, Amanda, how often do you anticipate being actually like in the facility, working in the building?
Yep, so that's a really good question. I travel all over the country for work, like right now, I'm in Albuquerque. But I will say a prime for my nine-to-five, it's mainly in the New England area. I actually live in Maine part-time, and I also live in New York part-time. And so I would say probably bi-weekly would be a good estimate of the time I'm in, traveling back and forth between New York and Maine. In addition to that, it's one of the reasons why we're hiring a manager or a person in charge, because I do recognize I can't be there all the time, but I am trained in sort of management training. So we'll make sure that they're fully up to speed and we're only offering the highest quality service.
Great, thanks.
And Denise, Amanda, you can step in here, but just to add to that, to yes about the vehicles. So remember with the Lucky Green Ladies retail establishment, right? It's a smaller building, so they're not planning on keeping product there. So they'll be using the vehicles to move product from the manufacturing to the retail as well.
Gotcha. And the retail is still ongoing, or is it?
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're still, well, they're still working on getting it up and running, yeah.
And even though, and even though you can product manufacturer with your retail, that you don't have those same permissions to do that with your delivery business. So we still very much need this business in order to support the delivery business.
Thank you.
All right, does anybody have any other questions? Okay. We'll now entertain a motion to approve the host community agreement and memorandum of agreement between the town of Norton and PM Norton LLC.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, this has been a long process, congratulations. You guys are all set.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, enjoy your dinner.
Safe travels.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have a discussion of spring annual town meeting articles.
So you had a list of potential articles. Some of them will probably be removed. I can give you one example, Article 13 on management. After it was submitted, we heard from our consultant on that. It looks like we may have enough funds to get through 24 the rest of this year and 2025. So we may be pulling that. And some of the other articles, OPEB stabilization. A lot of times, we'll hold off on those until the fall, but we'll have them on there. And then we're still on Articles 21 and 22. We're waiting for information from town council on that, proper language. Article 20, the townwide speed limits. Let's answer our question to the traffic safety committee. And similar to what we had once before on the town meeting warrant. And then we have the police department withdrawal from civil service. We did fire a previous town meeting.
Great.
If you have any questions later, just let me know.
This is 18 and 19?
What's that?
Was 18 and 19 the recertification program and the re discretion program?
That's for the assessors department. They have to do the three-year certification and a five-year certification on properties. And this will be seeking funds to hire the consultant to do that.
I should probably know, but what is W P A T?
Where are you with Article?
Article 26.
Article 26, that's from the Board of Health. That's the Water Pollution Abatement Trust. That's to help people that are feeling sore or constipated.
All right, any other questions? Kind of our first pass at this, so.
There's a lot of water stuff on you.
Yeah. All right, all right, cool. Thanks, Mike.
The next thing you have on your agenda is for Article 29. It's a petition article, and it's seeking to change the zoning bylaw. So I asked, they're looking to take out, change requirements for lighting. And I asked that you refer this to the planning board. I refer it's not by the recommendation.
Okay, and then the planning board will involve town council or whatever they need to do. Okay.
And they will review it and get it back to you.
And this is, the background of this is just neighbors having lights shining into their homes. Okay, and then there's like, there's also a section here about privacy as well.
Cameras.
Oh, yeah, so we refer both of them to?
No, because that's a general bylaw, not a zoning bylaw.
Okay, all right, gotcha. Okay, so I'll take a motion to refer. What was that article?
So this is making the zoning bylaw not applicable to lighting of the house, two residential houses.
Yeah.
She wants. It just says to strike that one sentence. It just says to strike that one sentence.
Right.
So that they don't want the zoning bylaw to apply to lighting which has an accessory used to one and two family?
I, I, I think what, um, what this is saying right now in our zoning is, if we have a whole zoning in front of us, that they have regulations for lighting, but it doesn't apply to one and two, um, family home, single-family, single-family homes and two-family homes, and she wants it to apply to that.
Yes, correct, so in the, in the, in the bylaw.
Oh, except for the, I got it.
Correct. They are currently exempt, one and two-family homes are, uh, residential dwellings are currently exempt, so.
I gotcha.
They want to un-exempt them.
I was reading it in the opposite.
All right, so I will, let's see if I can do this, I will entertain a motion to, um, refer Article 29.
29.
Um, to the planning board for its non-binding recommendations.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Denise?
Oh, aye, sorry.
Any opposed? Okay, all right, so, all right, very good, um, and next up is Sursage.
So the, what you have in front of you today, this is from the Southeastern Regional Services Group, these are the bids that came back, uh, and this is for work on the roadways by the highway department for the most part, paving, crack sailing, uh, line painting, and then guardrails, um, and loom compost gravel, and then the last one, snow shoveling. I don't know if we've talked about that before, but the reason this came up is years ago, not 2015, I think it was even before that, where we had a bad winter, and, uh, roofs were in danger of collapsing, and people, people were calling, landscaping companies were coming in and not cleaning roofs off.
2015.
And then people, um, and roofers, you know, started complaining that these, these weren't going up to bid, and people said, well, it's emergencies, so, uh, it became a bid to do, so now we go up to bid for it, so at least we have someone available if we need them, and in an emergency, we can call them right in, we don't have to go through a bid process while the roofs collapsing to get someone to come in.
That makes sense.
So Mike, just to clarify, instead of 2023 pricing, you're doing 24, so the price has not changed?
Right, yep.
Okay.
That's what Keenan, yep.
And if you could just authorize me to sign that contract?
And this grand total, this is for the entire?
Organization.
Yeah, gotcha. All right, you guys have any other questions? All right, I'll take a motion to, um, approve the, um, approve the, uh, Sursage DPW services, or author, sorry, I'll take a motion to authorize Mike, town manager, to sign the Sursage DPW services contract.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, next up, discussion of override, override process and our vote on town meeting article. Um, so I'll start off with this, because I asked it to be added, so, um, so we've, you know, we've had a couple of meetings now with the, the joint meetings with the school committee, um, and the FinCom, um, and then the school committee had their public hearing or their public, uh, workshop, uh, for the budget last week. Um, so, um, you know, obviously the question about whether or not, um, we're going to have, uh, have an override on, on the ballot, or at town meeting, or an article, however that's going to work, um, so I think it's time that we start to have that discussion. Um, and so I actually wanted Mike to just kind of give us a quick overview of, of the process, I know you also sent us some, some material here that kind of gives you the legal way of doing it, but if you could just kind of summarize for us what the override process is and kind of next steps.
So there's two ways you can do an override, um, and if it's going to, not a death exclusion, but an override, it becomes permanent part eventually, if you wanted to, you could have an underwrite and go away with it. Um, and you can do it two ways, you could have a ballot question, um, first, and, uh, put that before the voters, saying, uh, you know, you look to override, um, and put the dollar amount in there. Um, or you can go to town meeting first, and you can approve two budgets, you could approve, um, a budget funded with what we have available for revenue, and if you wanted to do an override, you can say budget B would be this if an override passes, and then you would have to, if you didn't have the ballot question first, you then have to have a special election, have a ballot, a ballot question on that.
Okay.
So you could either do it in April, um, before the town meeting, or if you wanted to go to town meeting first, you go to town meeting first, and then have a special election just for the override after.
Okay. Um, so, just a question on that, because I was wondering about this as well, so if you have, if we put it on town meeting warrant, you have sort of budget A, which is?
Right, there wouldn't be anything on the town wa, meeting warrant, it would just be, um, when we vote budgets.
Okay, obviously, right, so it's not a separate item, it's just in the discussions?
Part of the budget article.
And we could have, theoretically, you could have, you know, budget A being no override, budget B being whatever.
Right.
Million-dollar override, budget C, $2 million, you could do as many options as you wanted, and then it would just be voted on as part of the budget.
And then if you did it that, yeah, yeah.
You could do it that way, yeah, yeah. All right, I'm not going to ask for 15 budgets, but, just throwing it out there, because I think what I've always seen is just sort of the two, um, but, just in our discussions with the school committee, there, you know, there's, there's, looks like there's going to be, we don't have a five, we don't have a number right now, or even what on the town side, what you guys might, might be looking for, so, might be good to have some flexibility. Um, so, um, does anybody have any questions? I don't want to give you anyone talking.
So, I will just start by saying, I'm not opposed to override anything, but I think we need to see some good solid numbers, what the budget was for this year, what the budget is for level services across all departments, the school being one of the departments, right, for next year, and then what the gap is that we're trying to fill, so we can get some real hard numbers as far as what we're looking at. I don't want to see like any additional heads until we can level fund what we've got, right? And then you can include in that proposed budget, with the, with the gap, what those additional heads would be and why they'd be there, and then with explanation would be nice too, right?
Mm-hmm.
Who we need and why, right, we talked about DPW head for a couple of times now, for sure, I hope to see that, like, the proposed, um, budget, for sure, right?
Yeah, good.
And, I mean, I don't have any say in this, but, that's, that's my concern, if you try and put it on the ballot in April, you have to have, you have to have the ballot question done 35 days before the election, and we don't even have all the budgets in yet.
Right.
So.
And we probably won't be at that point.
If you're doing a special election, you're not going to have that vote until after fiscal year is started.
Right.
So that, that also is a little...
Well, no, because you would, uh, you would vote a funded budget based on what we have for revenue, and you would vote a budget B if an override passes, so you have a budget in place to start the fiscal year, and if the override passed, then you'd switch to that.
I mean, my, my personal thought is, I mean, if there's such a pressing need for an override, I think those numbers should be put out in, in plenty of time to get on the ballot. I mean, I, I'd like to see it on the ballot in April.
Yeah, I just, I don't see how you get a budget done and educate people and that, 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 I don't know.
If we did it in the fall?
Well, I mean, to be honest, this has been known for months now, at this point, so this, this is something that should already have been established.
Yeah, but we, we don't even have budgets in yet, so we don't have a number.
Yeah. It's hard, it's hard to go out there, palm the paper without knowing what you're asking for first.
Right, right, and, and what I wanted to kind of get the discussion going, which is the discussion we're having, which is, you know, get, there's all, there's always rumors out there about what the process is, and what, what, how it's going to work, and how, you know, so I just wanted to get it on the record, sort of, what the process is, um, and then, um, you know, just get everybody thinking about how we're going to move forward. If we, if someone wants to move forward with, you know, proposing an override, um, you know, start having that discussion now, because it's February, um, but, um, we don't have numbers, we don't have final, we don't have a final budget from the town yet, um, the schools are still working on, you know, what their, you know, if they're going to have to do cuts, what the cuts will be, um, you know, what their, um, you know, what their, I guess what their final ask will be based on the cuts, so there's still some steps that have to go through here. Um, you know, I, we're not, you know, I don't think we're going to vote on an, you know, on an override tonight, that's not in the cards, obviously, we're way ahead of that, um, but just to kind of get everybody thinking about, you know, when we hear things at the school, at the joint meetings, like, it's a crisis and all this, I mean, we've got to address it and be ready for, you know, whatever might, might come in, whether it's in April, or whether it's at the town meeting, or wherever it happens.
I, I agree, I, I think we, we need to be ready for it, I think, um, my concern also is that the next joint meeting is going to be on the 25th, and if this were to go on to the, the ballot for the 27th, I think we have, um, until March 22nd, I think, to get it onto the ballot.
That's a 35 days.
So that, yeah, so that's something that I was going to reach out and just ask if we could push that meeting up maybe a week, so we could have those numbers and make a decision whether or not to get them to ballot, if that makes sense. That avoids a special election and the cost with that as well.
So, so to that, to that same point, could you put it in the fall election, because we have an election in October, right, the fall election?
Mm-hmm.
Could you put it on that ballot, and what would, how would that impact the budget, the ability to use the budget if it happens in the fall?
Well, the problem you would have there is, if you wait until the fall and say, whatever the school says they need to level fund and keep all the staff they have now.
They have to cut and then hire after.
Right, they have to be able to hire until end of school already started, so that'd be tough.
And that, and the, and the fall election is the presidential election, so you can't, you can't do it, you can't have it on that ballot, you still have to have a special election, I think.
Outside, actually, you can't have it on the same.
Can't have it on the same ballot.
It would ensure some great attendance.
For both of them. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, uh, any other questions, or, so really, there's, you know, the, the vote would be, if we were going to vote, well, there's really no vote tonight, is that what we're saying? Because we wouldn't, we, we don't necessarily have, we don't have to vote to put it on the warrant, it's really just a separate budget item within the budget discussion on the warrant.
Right, if you don't do an article, if you don't have an Article 30.
Right, and anybody can come to town meeting and propose changes to the budget, correct?
Not yet.
You know, open that door, but that could happen, right?
Right.
Okay.
Is, is there a way we can push that meeting up, the 25th, March 22nd? I know, we're not going to decide that tonight, I'm just saying, let's reach out and try to do that, because.
Our meeting?
You know, the joint meeting where you're supposed to go.
The joint meeting.
Yeah, because, and, and I agree, I mean, it's, it's, I feel like everybody's saying, this is so urgent, we need to do this, but let's wait until July, you know, if it's so urgent, let's do it now, let's get it on the ballot.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think, I agree with, I agree with you in the sense that there's urgency, I think there's also a process that we want to follow, that we make sure that, you know, we're, that process that we're following is giving the most education to the public, so that they can make a decision, because ultimately, it's town, makes this decision, it's not us. So, you know, so I think we need to make sure that everybody has time to digest, get the information they need, and make a decision. I'm not saying they can't do that in that amount of time, but I'm saying.
But town meeting is two weeks after, after the ballot, after the election.
Right, but we have to have it, if we're going to put it on the ballot, it has to be in March.
Right, so, so that's what I'm saying, I mean, the, like I said, the meeting that we're going to discuss all the, the final numbers is on the 25th of March, if we had that meeting a week earlier, we could discuss those numbers and vote on whether we put it on the April ballot. It, it literally is a matter of a week.
Right, and if you didn't do it that way, if you went the other way, town meeting is, um, March, May 15th, right?
Yeah.
So on May 16th, after that meeting, you could vote a ballot question, hand it to Lucia, and could have a election 35 days after that town meeting, so at least some time.
But add an extra cost to that, too, I mean, there's another cost for a special election. So the last one was what, $10,000 or something like that, something?
I think it was less than that, yeah.
Eight, maybe.
Yeah. Um, Alec, looked like you were going to say something.
Sorry.
I didn't want to, I didn't want to touch on.
It's just, you know, a, a special election and trying to save that money, if there is a way, you know, the, you know, the, when are the rest of the budgets due? I mean, that's, you know, Steve's point of trying to save the money for a special election, I mean, we know enough that we're going to have such a shortfall with the schools, but when are the rest of the departments, the townside departments, you know, when are budgets due, Mike? Do you?
They're coming in next week.
Yeah, that's plenty, yeah.
I just forget, I need, I need detail, lots of detail, right?
Yeah.
This year, level services.
Right, and what?
I'm 100% with you.
What the tax impact would be, you know, all of that, all of that still has to happen.
Yeah.
You know, so, but, you know, we wanted to just get it, get it out there, that it's being discussed, and that's, you know, the financial situation is dire, so.
All the more reason to have it on the April ballot, I mean, that's, that's what I keep going back to, is everybody's saying this is such an emergency, so why are we not trying to get these numbers, you know, if not early, at least on time, you know, in a week from now, and then have a meeting, discuss it, and, and put it on the ballot? So, I mean, it's such an emergency, why are we going to wait an extra three or four months? That, that's, that's my problem with it.
Well, we're not waiting three or four months, are we?
Well, and it's not that easy, you know, the way.
Oh, I know, yeah, I'm not saying.
If everyone swims their budgets, then you got to go over to make sure they calculate all the salaries, because I'm glad you can.
Oh, no, I've been doing budgets since I was like 15 years old, so I, I mean, I understand that aspect of it, so I don't mean to, to say that your position in this is, you just snap your fingers and you know what numbers are coming in, I'm just saying that, you know, there was a lot of, uh, talk at the joint meeting of, of we need this, we need this desperately, we need it now, but let's wait a little bit.
Well, I don't think.
So that's what I feel like is, is happening, and I think, I think it should go on the, on the April ballot.
Yeah, but I don't think it matters, if you have the, if you, if you, if it gets approved on June 1st, or if it goes, it goes on the ballot on April, whatever it is, it's the fiscal year budget starting July 1, 2024, so it doesn't, there's no, I don't think, I don't think there's, I don't think there's, the urgency is misplaced, there's no necessarily, there's no urgency to say, you have to have it, you know, you have to move it up because it has to be done urgently, well, it has to be urgently for the budget that is effective in February of 2020, oh, sorry, man, what is it, what's the month? July of 2020, the July 2025 fiscal year budget, but, so, um, so, you know, we can talk about this more with the other, with the other, with the other, the other committees, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure the, the urgency is around when it gets voted on, the urgency is around, we have a budget that's coming up for February 20, February, July of 2025, you know, the July 2025 fiscal year budget, it doesn't, I don't see that the urgency is in the lead-up to it, the urgency is just, we need the money because we're low on money. That was extremely not eloquent, but I was.
So we're, we're, we're low on money, so let's spend an extra eight to $10,000 on a special election. Do you see where that, that is kind of?
I, I, I'm going to be honest, like, the cost thing to me is a red arrow, like, $6,000, $7,000, we're talking about, we're talking about being $4 million short, or whatever in the budget, or $5 million short, I don't, I don't think having a special election at $6,000 or whatever it's going to cost is, you know, I, I just, I just think that's an excuse to try to not have, not have it done properly, but.
So, I mean, I could go back to the special election where Alec had his special election, there was an uproar about that because of the cost, so, you know, you can't, you can't fight one and then not the other.
Are you saying Alec is illegitimate?
I never said that, I signed the ballot myself.
No, but anytime we want to do anything that requires a special election, we always say, well, it's the cost, it's the cost, it's the cost, it's the cost, but we also have to think about what's the proper way and the best way to do something, and if it costs $6,000, it's like, well, we can't do anything because it costs money, well, I get that, and I know we're short a lot of money, but if the right way to do it is the right way to do it, then we have to put that in, we can't just always say, well, it's $6,000, so forget, you know, that's, you know, and, yeah, maybe some. yeah, maybe some people were in an uproar, but some people are in uproar about things, about other things.
With all due respect.
Everybody could be in an uproar.
With all due respect, the right way to do it is what you're saying we should do. That's, that doesn't mean that's the right way to do it. The right way to do it would be to put it on the ballot in April, give the people a chance to vote on it, and then bring it to the, I don't understand why, why it's being.
Well, because. I think, I think the point is, if we rush it too much, it's, we're not.
Well, by means that rush, all we would have to do is move a meeting one week in advance to discuss it.
It's not just the meeting though, right? It's also rallying support around it and understanding.
So now you're into political issues. So now this is more of a political thing.
I'm not saying.
So you need time, you need time to, to put signs out and do all that stuff. That should not be what we're talking about here.
No, but you want to, you want to move it up so there's less time to do that.
No, because I'll still put signs out against it. I mean, I don't care about that. I just, I think the people should have a choice and they should, they should be able to vote on it. And our decision shouldn't be based on whether we're going to politically activate against it, you know, go against it or for it. It should not have anything to do with that.
I agree.
You know, I personally don't want it on the ballot, but I want it on the ballot for people to, to have their choice. I mean, they should have the right to, to vote on it.
I don't disagree, we need to educate them about what it's, what it's for and why we're doing it, right? We have to have time to educate them for it without rushing through it. Otherwise, no one's going to know what it's for and it's going to get a, a no, which might make some people happy, but we have not given them a fair shot.
I think the other thing is that if you, if you, if you've discussed it at town meeting, there's a town discussion about it at town meeting. Right? So at the town meeting, who are the voters? Who are the ones who are going to decide? Right? If you have that discussion at town meeting, you talked about the budget. What's on the budget? What, why do we have this option? What is, what's going to happen if we, you know, don't do X versus Y? And then you just put it on the ballot, you don't, you don't have that opportunity to discuss. The town meeting members, the, the citizens of the town, don't have the opportunity to discuss it. You know, at the forum where they should be discussing.
I agree, but, but Florida, unfortunately, we get much less voting people at the town meetings than we do at an election.
Well, you'll definitely get attendance, more attendance at an override town meeting than you would for a.
It will still be abysmal, but yes.
Yeah, this discussion's definitely been enlightening because I think the reason to push this off is all political and, and has nothing to do with the actual vote, in my opinion. That's, that's what we're getting from this discussion, so.
Yeah, I mean, I don't.
I know we're not going to vote on anything tonight, so.
Yeah, I don't agree with that. I think what we're trying to do is just, we're in February already, is just get as much time as possible for the folks who vote on it, which is the town, more time to understand what the situation is, what the budget will be, and again, to have that discussion at town meeting, I think is valuable.
We were in mid-February, we have no idea what the numbers are yet, so we haven't been able to digest it ourselves, never mind educate the people about what the money is for.
If I can say.
Yeah, go ahead.
He may not be here in body, but he's here in spirit. And Peter reminded me the meeting is May 13.
Okay, not May 15.
Did he message you?
Okay.
Yeah, that's why I said it's two weeks after.
So we didn't want people showing up on the wrong meeting? All right.
Two weeks after the April election, yeah.
Okay. All right, well, I appreciate the spirited discussion, as you know. We will have more to, to discuss on this. Yeah, we, we do have comments.
Come on up.
Kim?
Yeah.
So listen, I'm going to go back to what I like, pop, right? And, and this, nothing political, but one of the things that he did as part of the PC to, you know, make sure that the community understood and was comfortable with what we were doing with marijuana by law, the overlay, overlay, things like that. We had information sessions, we had information that we posted that were, that was available to people. I mean, it's not, it's not a political thing, but some people might truly be like, well, how should we vote? Like, I don't know the impact of not doing an override versus doing an override, or where those things are going to be hit. You know, one of the things we talked about years ago with the, the new community center and the town hall was what are our operational expenses going to be? Right? You have a building much larger, you know you're going to have increased expenses. We've had now, even though at the time, you know, it was, no, we're not going to add any heads, we're going to have seniors help with cleaning up, may trash, well, that's not the case, right? Now we're looking for additional heads. So when you think of that, like, think of over time, like, I, I liked your comment earlier about, we don't have anything new to the budget because we can't even afford what we're asking for now or what we need right now. But if we don't understand what that impact is going to be over time, like, it's going to be a problem. Like, I, I like the sense of urgency to put it on there, but I can tell you from a perspective of, of feedback, like, you want an opportunity to collect feedback. Like, people will say, look, I'm not going to support this because X, Y, and Z.
Well, that's what all these meetings have been for. I mean, this is what the, the budget meetings are for, and this is what the joint meetings are for, to educate the people on what, you know, what's being presented. So it's not like we're, we're asking people to vote on nothing. We're having these meetings and that, I mean, maybe it should be more. But when I hear, when I hear, we need time to educate the people. We need time to educate the people and that, that is a political thing, that's not, educating the people would be joint meetings and having these meetings and having the discussions that we had at the last meeting, I thought was a great discussion. The school board presented their reasoning for their, you know, the 12% that they needed. And that was, that was a very educational discussion, and that's educating the people, in my opinion. Not getting out, I don't know.
That's one department that we have not weighted against the rest of the project whole budget, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
We haven't looked at the whole budget in, in the entirety.
But that's also 60 to 70% of the entire budget. So, I mean, that's like a, that's a huge amount. So the fact that those, those meetings are going on is great for the town and the people to understand, you know, the, the actual need and why they need, you know, that kind of increase. Again, again, it's, it's, there's such an urgency, why are we, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, and I, I can just, like I said, I can add that the process that we took, right, to ensure that people were informed, that they were comfortable with it. I mean, one of, one of those things that we got, that we got, that we heard most was the, the worry about, right? So we specifically identified, you know, CCC didn't do anything on it, so we identified controls that were put in place because that was the feedback. Like, those are things I think that, you know, we, we miss opportunities on. When we had the discussion for the debt exclusion, remember folks came up about struggles with their taxes? Like, can we find a way as a community? And, and many people offered, like, can, can we give money? Can the town do this? Why is the town not being in a position, but maybe we have another organization that can? Like, how can we try to offset the challenges that other people have if we don't know what they are, if we don't know their concerns? So I'm, I'm just saying, it was, it was very fruitful for us to have open discussions, at info sessions, and somebody is baking tea.
I don't know.
I don't even know where it's coming from.
Sounds like wings.
Yeah.
I feel that could change.
But, but I think, I think those are opportunities. And like I said, I appreciate the urgency to get it on there, but as a person who, like, I mean, Mike even said he doesn't know what the budget is right now. So it would be nice to know, well, what do, what do we need to lose and what will we lose year over year, understanding that. I just think that's information that we don't have, and if you rush it, people aren't going to know, so most likely, they won't even come out and vote. And I don't think that's a way to move a community forward.
So I'm, I'm not asking to rush it, I'm asking to bump a meeting up a week because we're, we're having these meetings, these open discussions on these budgets, so why not bump that meeting up a week? And again, that, it's not, it's not my call, it's not our call, we got to talk to everybody. But you bump that up a week, it gives people an opportunity to, to come to the meetings, ask questions, and find out all the information, because they should. I mean, I think they should, to make a proper decision.
But that meeting is.
But it's, it's literally a week, it's.
That meeting's only a proportion of what the discussion needs to be, right? That's just the school department with FinCom, us.
Oh, yeah, and we'll have meetings with, with the other departments, yeah.
Correct, but that's what I'm saying, is there's a series of meetings that will need to happen. We'll need to have time to digest the budget, talk about what makes sense, what doesn't make sense, and then decide what we want to propose, how that impacts, like, there's a lot of steps that need to happen, and I just feel like, we're in mid-February now, we don't even have final budgets in yet, have, have a chance to kind of collate all that information. I, I do think it's going to be too rushed to do any, but, again, I like the urgency, I love it, but.
I think the other thing we have to think about is.
Too, too urgent means a lot of nothing information, I think.
I think the other, this, and when I say we, I mean, school committee, FinCom, us. I think we have to think about framing whatever it is, whatever this information is, in a way that says, this is information we're providing for you to make a decision. And, and then it's, it's going to, and I know a member of the school committee has, has said this a number of times, and I think it's true, that it's, it's, it's ultimately on town meeting, it's ultimately on the people, the people of the town. And so I think our job is to give them as much information as possible. You know, and that includes, like, how much would, Mike, you know, you know, if we have a budget of, you know, budget A, which is, which is what we have right, you know, what we're looking at right now with no override, budget B is override plus whatever it is, a million dollars, to say like, okay, you know, average assessed value, this is how much taxes will, will be increased. How much are my taxes going to increase because of the debt exclusion? Because that's coming up on people's tax bills as well. And you have to present all of that information out. I think our job is to present all that information to town, to town meeting. That's how I feel. And then have town meeting have a discussion about, you know, because they are a legislative body, right? So they need to have the discussion about what's on this budget, what is going to be cut, what is going to be included, and have that vote with that discussion. That's, that's just my, that's my opinion. But I think our role has to be to just provide the information, and the town manager's office to provide as much information as we possibly can so that they can make the decision. And ultimately, you know, what we found out, what we know now tonight is, you know, it can go to town meeting and somebody could propose something.
Right now, right now, I just figured, these three budgets that we need to see, right? One is, this is what we're going to have to lose with the budget that we currently have today. This is what we need to have level services across the town, and this is what we want to have a DPW head, human resources, IT.
Well, the DPW head, I don't mean to cut you off, I apologize. The DPW head has to, that has to happen. So that's not, that's not like a wishlist, that's, that's more of a, but that's for a whole other discussion, I'm sorry.
Right, what I'm saying is, I, I see three, right?
Yeah.
There's level services what we have today, there's what we, what are we going to lose with the current budget, and what do we need, want, whatever.
Yeah, I think Mike asked, he usually asks them, the department heads, for a wishlist, right? With a wishlist budget, yeah.
That's the first budget we'll get.
Yeah.
Then you can't turn it around in 24 hours, right? Yeah.
My thing to add too, like, I, you know, you guys talked about the responsibility and bring it to town meeting, and I, I can be here 100% correct, but I also think the community, right? People who are out here and concerned with what the budget's going to do, what's going to happen with police services down the line, or emergency services, like, it's still our responsibility to share that too. And so I think, you know, your, your responsibility is to make sure the information's there and then the community has to pick it up too. Because this isn't something that, it's not the select board's going to carry it, or FinCom's going to carry it, or school committee, they're three of them together, it's much bigger than that, right? It's, it's going to have contacts, maybe even positive press and work.
All right. Thank you. Does anybody else want to make a comment? Go ahead. Yeah, yeah.
Paula Daniels, I'm the chair of the finance committee. I've been on the finance committee since 2019, and every spring, we go through the same thing where all of the departments are presenting their budgets, and for the most part, there's not some extreme budget that people are putting in front of us, not these dream things. It's pretty much level services is what they need to operate, not just the school departments, all the power departments. And every year, we hear that, and then we meet again, and Mr. Unitz here provides his recommendation, and it's always like, 2.5%, 3%, whatever we can afford, because we are under the prop 2.5%. And then it's sad, because it's like, oh, okay, this department really needed this, and oh, now they can't get it, or this department needs this. So it, it's just, we need to have time too, as a finance committee, we're not even going to start meeting until March 4th, and the departments start to present to us March 10th. So we have a very full schedule for the whole month of March to hear all of these budgets. So, yeah, I can't even imagine by March 22nd, being able to have all of the information we need to, even for our finance committee to understand, and then be able to present it to the town for the ballot vote, so, yeah. So, I mean, very anxious.
My question is, I mean, if the budgets are supposed to be due and ready for town meeting, then why wouldn't you have enough time to figure that out before then? I mean.
Well, like, the school budget, the final school budgets do, not due till eight weeks before the town meeting, I think it is.
No kind of public hearing as well.
Yeah, which is still, I think, 30 days before the, the town election, so that would still.
It's not just the school budget we're talking about, the OIBA, or when you, you know.
Well, the school budget is the bigger one, so that would probably take the most time to go, obviously, because there's.
I know, but I think the whole, the town needs to understand the needs of all of the departments, and just moving up the school, the meeting that we're having on March 25th, moving that up, it's still excluding all the other needs of the other departments, and making sure that, that is being discussed as well. But I'm just going to put it out there, I'm anxious about.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Being able to make a deadline of April 22nd or whatever.
Because even though I was on FinCom, I forgot about it. I'm proud of that.
Yeah, all of getting every, all of the departments in and going through all their individual requests and all that.
Will you, will you, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Will you see the budgets for the other departments before the 25th or after?
So we have, do we have one more meeting after the 25th? I think we do on the schedule, April 4th, maybe. So, yeah, we'll see some of them. We have like five or six presenting each week, each Monday, which, you know, the public, they're not coming to our meetings. I mean, we have Peter pretty much coming to our meetings, and that's it. So, yeah, for the town to really be able to hear this information, it's not going to happen during finance committee meetings.
It should, it should.
Oh, I, I agree. I wish more people had time, please come to our finance committee. But yeah, I think that the town meeting would provide more of an opportunity for more of the public to have a discussion, hear the needs, and vote.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thanks, Paula. Hang on one second. Do we have anybody online that's asked any questions or anything?
No.
No, okay.
Do we have anybody on the girls' basketball team one?
Oh, is it WhatsApp?
You said the girls' basketball team.
Oh, girls.
That's right, tell me where he was.
That's good, we don't have to worry about it. Um, please introduce yourself and where, and your address.
It's valid for all, I live in 50 man's scale, I'm in. So what are my taxes going to go up, Steve? Can you tell me right now, if we put this on the April ballot, when do you think you'd be able to tell me as a citizen? How much my taxes on my, basically double the average home value in the town? How much my property taxes will go up? Are you 100% certain that I'll have time to know all of that and understand if I want to vote for my taxes to go up? Probably double what most people's, more than double what most people's are going to go up in this town?
Okay, by personally?
Yeah, you personally, right now, since you think that we should put it on that educating the public is a bad thing, can you tell me right now how much my taxes are going to go up?
Can you, can you please tell me when I said educating the public was a bad thing?
A political thing, I'm sorry, it was a political thing. I'm sorry. It's a political thing to educate the town. I don't know how much right now my taxes would go up under any of these propositions because we don't have budgets for anything, as has been said already. I am going to be impacted by this a lot more than probably most people in the town. And I'm happy to do that because I saw my friends' kids crying at school committee meetings last year, and then narrowly by the skin of our teeth, we managed to shuffle some stuff around. And I'm glad that that was able to be done, but I can't keep the end done. And like I said, I'm happy to be that guy who pays a crap ton more on my taxes if it helps other people's kids. I don't have any, I don't have a personal stake in this, aside from hoping that kids have good schools. I grew up in West Bridgewater, if anyone's wondering, which is a completely small-town vibe and no more taxes. And I went to tons of town meetings as a kid, so none of this is new to me. And hearing people argue whether kids are worth it or whatever. But my thing is, if we have this idea that we don't have any solid numbers right now, I don't understand anything about a push to put it on, how we push to put, to put it off from April is political in any way because we know, I know personally, because I checked recently, a few hundred people usually watch even the joint meetings that get such a big deal, right? The select finance school committee meetings. On YouTube, you get a few hundred people after the fact, and live, you guys get, you know, 10 or so, like, everybody was giggling about, like, nobody watches them. Well, I watch them, I just can't watch them live. But even that, it's a few hundred people. So those, that's the maximum amount of people, aside from some frittering online, that have any information that an override is even potentially being considered. I don't think it's political to hope that the town probably wants more than at max 35 days to consider something as significant as an over, two, pro, two and a half override that this town has never done, and as Peter has told us, what, in 40 something years, that we've never done one. And I know, because I didn't live here when they happened, but I know that they failed in the past, attempts for overrides have failed in the past. I think it's important to give time to educate on both sides before you put that on the ballot. So that's my opinion. I know that it's ranty, I'm aware. But as someone who's going to be super impacted by this and who is pretty invested in it in a number of different ways, I think doing it right to the points that have been made is giving it as much time as possible for people to understand what's going to happen. Because even just to spin up a calculator to say, put your home value in and here's, here's how much it's going to go up, is, is going to take time. And that will, that's not political information in any way. So that's really all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paula.
Can I just make one note?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
I, I, I understand that there are people that are 100% for it, and people that are 100% against it, that's perfectly fine. And I don't think educating the public is a political issue at all. But I do think if, if, you know, people are so gung ho about paying extra taxes, they're welcome to send extra money in to the town hall and we can accept it as a joint issue.
Yeah, I've done that in our 20.
Thank you very much. Yeah.
We appreciate it.
I just want to say, I don't even know them for it, if you guys see, they don't even know what it is. We have to find it.
Exactly.
So we need to do that first.
And that's the process I want to, to, to get done, you know, to find out exactly what you're going to look for.
There's an element of the horse, the car being in front of the horse here, for sure. Like, we, we still need, we still need many steps to occur in the next, in, in a short period of time, frankly, in the next couple of months. So, you know, I think it's good that we had the discussion, that it's, that it's out there now. The select board has discussed it, even just the early steps of it and what that means. And again, you know, what happens now? We continue to get numbers, we look at the numbers, we try to finalize the numbers, provide as much information as we can to town, to, to the town, and then goes from there. That's, that's, I think the only way it's going to work.
Well, I personally look forward to accepting donations.
And I say work, I don't mean, I don't mean approved or not approved. That's the only way this process can, can, can work. You know, I just don't think it, I don't think that having, you know, discussions now about dollars and all that kind of stuff is fruitful.
It's not feasible, yeah, we don't have the, yeah. So, yeah, like I said, you know, I didn't mean to interrupt, but yeah, no, I, I look forward to the next meeting to accepting donations that are, that are going to come floating in.
Yeah, I, I think to expect $4 million in donations or $2 million in donations, that was.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't ask for that much. I mean, there are some people that are so gung ho, but that's fine.
Yeah. And I'll just, I'll just make another point since, since you appear to be on this kick right now. So I'll, I'll just, I'll just make one more point about this, is that people aren't gung ho about spending more in taxes. People are gung ho about keeping teachers and keeping athletics and keeping after-school programs. That's what people are gung ho about. They're not gung ho about increasing taxes. They're gung ho about protecting the services that the town needs and that the town's children need, that the town's schools need in order for them to be competitive schools.
Right.
And so to, to put it out there as though people just want their taxes increased is insulting, frankly. People don't want their taxes increased, but they also want the services that they need in order for their children to get properly educated. So if you, if, you know, if you want to make it about, well, somebody can just go to town hall and give them another 500 bucks, well, those people are already doing that, Steve. Those people who have athletics or have kids who take the bus, they're already paying more than other people in this town for their taxes. Aren't they? Because they're paying for athletic fees, or they're paying for bus fees, or they're paying for music fees, or whatever fees they're paying for. So those people are already paying more in taxes. So I don't, I'm getting a little heated here because that, 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 that thing about, well, people can just go to the town hall and pay more money, they're already doing that.
But I'm offering to do it for your kids, by the way. I have kids.
All right, let's keep, keep comments, keep comments from the gallery. Okay, so, anyway, all right. A good spirited discussion.
Oh yeah, sure.
All right, next up, what do we have next on the agenda?
Tommy Anderson's report.
Let's have it.
So one of the big things in the budget, obviously, is health insurance. And we've been pretty fortunate the last few years, as I said, as I've trained you before. Well, it looks like that luck has run out and we'll know next Wednesday what our insurance is going to, health insurance is going to increase. We met, the chairman of the community and myself met with our actual area today, and the increase is going to be anywhere from a low 4.5 to a high of 9.1. So say it's 5%, that's $400,000 increase in the budget. For every 1%, it's about $80,000 increase in the budget. So we'll know next Wednesday what that impact's going to be. And just a couple awards, grant awards. The fire department received $13,917 from the Department of Fire Services for turnout gear. The COA announced that they received a $10,000 grant for the Norton Energy Fund. So if you know anyone that's having trouble, you know, heating their home, they should contact the Council on Aging and there's assistance available to help them. The next thing I had was to talk about the storm, I guess what the storm. Yeah, everyone was ready. Everyone thought they were going to get a day off from work, but unfortunately, they didn't because we didn't get the snow, so. It was, I love the weather guy saying, you know, you can't expect us to have a great forecast three or four days in advance. Well, we don't, but you hype it up for seven days, and then 12 hours before the storm's supposed to come, everything changed, so it was pretty amazing.
So no, no reports of flooding or any of those other issues we've seen with other, with other issues? That's good.
No.
That's good.
And yesterday, we met Southeastern Regional Dispatch Center, CEMRAC. We met with Metacomic, which is six towns, Millville, Franklin, Plainville, Noah Fork, one other that I'm forgetting, but anyways, all the towns, all of us agreed to look at the possibility of emergency of the two districts. They, we have them come into our dispatch center. And so it's something we're going to explore and we'll bring information back to you as we study it further.
Okay.
So I had a great question. Yeah, you know, I was actually mentioning this yesterday or the other day. We haven't had a CEMRAC meeting before. I think, I think I've been to one.
Yeah, only, the only meeting was when we were changing the agreement to allow us to look at other communities.
Yeah, okay.
So there will be one if this moves forward.
Do we have like a select board representative to CEMRAC?
I think that's the way you do it.
No, the last time we had, I think, three of us went.
You, you can all vote or you can pick a representative.
We had a majority, I guess.
Okay, yeah. All right, we have, Alec has a nice recognition.
Yes, from Pat Tavantino. She is the local coordinator for the Reese Across America. She wrote a letter, "Dear Select Board Members, the Reese Across America Committee wishes to publicly recognize," excuse me, "and thank the members of the Norton Cemetery and Highway Department for their tremendous support they extend to our yearly event. As in many events, the work that happens behind the scenes is not fully apparent to others. Our cemetery and highway department play a crucial role for us, and we want them to know our appreciation. They allow our wreaths to be unloaded in huge pallets, many times with just a few hours' notice. Then they transport the allotted number of wreaths to the two cemeteries that have sheds for safe storage until the day of the ceremony. They also transport the remaining wreaths on the day of the ceremony to the one cemetery where there is no shed. One month after, weather permitting, they go through each cemetery and remove all 700-plus wreaths. This is not an easy feat, as you can imagine. This takes considerable time and effort. Without the cemetery and highway department's help, I cannot imagine the tremendous difficulties our small committee would face. Sincere thanks and recognition to our Norton Cemetery and Highway Department. Signed, Pat Tavantino, Reese Across America, local coordinator."
That's great, and we want to thank Pat again for coordinating that and doing all that. It's just an awesome event, so thank you to Pat. Does anybody else have anything for select board report in mail? Don't think I have anything.
Sure. I'll have something.
Yep.
The warrants has written.
Oh, there you go. The warrants have been approved, and the next meeting agenda for the select board will be February 29, 2024. Do you have anything else, Mike?
Nope.
All right.
I just want to tell you, you've got 2.5 inches of stuff.
Okay, all right. That's about what I got at my house, too. So there's no executive session tonight. Any, take a motion, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor? Hi, any opposed?
Tuesday.
Oh, hold on, yeah.
I did say I had something more to say.
Yeah, forget time.
What? It has to be something on the agenda.
Okay.
So what do you want to talk about? Is it on the agenda?
Yes.
It was about this.
The slang that keeps going on?
First of all, I'd like to thank Mike. If you think the telephone poll thing was frustrating to me, Mike was having to tell National Grid exactly what to say seven times. And he still didn't get it right, but we'll see what happens. We also are missing one board member. You mentioned other boards.
Oh, right, I'm sorry, I'm sorry about that. Yeah, 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 this was.
Oh, thank you for letting me speak.
I'm sorry about that. Under the rule of unanticipated items within 48 hours, we will, please go ahead, Mr. Slatter.
Thank you, sir. Also, that has come up to me as the building committee chairman. I have been approached, and the town manager has been approached, as people see the buildings being completed, about giving donations. Hopefully, there should be only one conduit for that, and that's Mike. I don't need it, I don't get paid for it. If you come to me, I'm going to go to Mike. Mike and I had a discussion, he was approached by somebody in the last week, I was approached by somebody. I think that, you know, if people want to donate or have a road named after them or whatever,